We are ready.
Let's call this meeting to order. Renee, would you call again, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Orthman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Here.
Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Let it also reflect that President is our Assistant Town Attorney Ed Mazzaro, our interim chief John Hasley, myself, and absent with notice is our Town Manager Greg Dunham.
Thank you very much. We can present with the minutes for our last meeting, February 10th. Is there any comments, changes, or motion to approve?
Time moved, it'd be approved as presented.
Second.
Ms. Basil?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Orthman?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Our next meeting will be April 14th at nine AM for anyone who wishes to attend. We have no changes to the agenda, I believe. That's correct, Commissioner Mazzaro?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
However, I'd like to address one that was on the agenda and has been removed. Some people were disappointed with that, others were pleased with it. And that is the ordinance that was being discussed at the last couple of meetings about changing the golf cart ordinance to prohibit animals being towed, walked, or exercised with the carts. And I want to explain why I took this off the agenda. This is an ordinance that addresses the behavior of one individual, that is, one resident in our town. Gulfstream is the type of town, we are a neighborhood, we are a neighborly town. And it just struck me that rather than immediately legislating from the dates, we are a neighborhood who should try to work things out amicably if possible. So unfortunately, I couldn't discuss it with the other commissioners because of the sunshine law. It prohibits me from doing it. So what I did was I spoke to Acting Chief Hasley to get background on this issue. And the issue is that we have a resident who has exercised her dog running behind her beside her golf cart for nearly 20 years. However, we have a town that has changed. We have more people, we have younger people, and maybe that's the demographic reason, but we have a lot more dogs. And according to Chief Hasley, between seven and nine in the morning and five at seven in the evening, we have roughly 25 dogs being walked through the town. And when a golf cart comes up to them at a rate of speed with the dog running beside it, it can be frightening, disturbing, and exciting to some of the dogs. And I mean, you can see the issues that we address here in the town of Gulfstream and the importance of them. But this is important because it affects how we live in this town. The people walking their dogs, they don't just walk them, they socialize. And that's one of the beauties of our town, and we want to preserve it. They meet on the corners, they walk the dog, and then they chat and socialize out in the middle of the street. It's one of the functioning beauties of our town, is that the roads are really an extension of our properties. That's what's so unique about living in Gulfstream. And so it is disruptive to have what has been occurring, exercising the dog at a rate of speed that can disturb other people's dogs. But rather than legislating it right now, I asked this person to come into Town Hall with her husband, and we sat here and we discussed it at length. And we agreed that this was a problem, and how could we best resolve it? And so what I suggested is that she can take her cart and dog out every time she wants. But if she sees another dog on the road in front of her, she must slow that cart down to a walk. And if she happens to see a dog that she's had an issue with in the past, or a large dog on the side of the road, she's going to bring her dog into the golf cart with her. Well, the bottom line is with 25 dogs in the street, she's not going to be able to exercise her dog at a run. And fortunately, she's a person who gets up very early in the morning. And so what we agreed is that she would exercise her dog early in the morning before the seven to nine AM. I-95 highway experience of dogs. And so that's how we left it. And I explained that, let's see if this works out. If it doesn't work out, this has been tabled, it hasn't been dismissed, we'll bring it back. But I'm hopeful that we can resolve this issue like neighbors. So that's why I did it. Okay, let's move on. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak?
Three minutes, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, everyone. Thank you. Thanks for hearing me. My name's Jeff Bonjorno, and I'm a Gulfstream resident for about 12 years now. And I love it here. You guys are doing a great job. Great neighbors. Thank you all. I recently ran for United States Congress. I challenged Brian Mast. And the reason I'm here, I know we have a lot of local issues. And I own an IT firm for 22 years. And I served on the Microsoft Research Panel for about four years. And we took technology from the desktop to the cloud, so everything is, you pay monthly. And I got in deep into Microsoft, and I'm an expert in many fields. And during my run for Congress, I challenged some of the results. And I wanted to bring forth, has anyone seen Tucker Carlson on the J6 tapes? Anybody seen how our government's lying to us? So just one person says seen Tucker?
I'm sure.
Okay, so what we, through investigations and subpoenas of some forensic images of actual election servers in Colorado and in Georgia, we found that they're compromised at the highest level. And I believe now that we have a Republican County Commission, we can hopefully make some changes by either requesting a forensic image through subpoena audit based on the information that we have garnered already. And also, the big problem that we have in this county is the same people that are running the software are responsible for the security. And this is technical stuff. I know it's heavy, and it's nine o'clock in the morning. But this is for real, and the evidence that we have is irrefutable. And I wanted to bring it to the local level, to everyone's attention, and hopefully leverage the fact that Governor DeSantis appointed Michael Barnett, a Republican. And we have a four to three majority in the County Commission. And hopefully, if we could pressure from the ground up to have something done. I know Governor DeSantis says we're the gold standard of elections, but we're not. And, you know, I can prove it. I have some videos out. And I'm just looking for help from the ground up, and that's why I'm here today. So I could leave a card with some information. I think that it's really important. I really, and I believe that the person, Dan Franchese, who primaried, who actually ran against Lois Frankel, he won. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If anyone's interested in assisting you in this, can certainly get hold of you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mayor, I have a letter that Mrs. Walton wanted to be read to the Gulfstream Commissioners. My name is Ellen Walton. I live at 520 Banyon Road. I am writing on behalf of myself and the neighbors of the property being developed near the corner of Polo and Banyon. At the last meeting, there was in-depth discussion about the front appearance of the proposed construction and how it fits in with the size and height of Gulfstream houses. It is clear it is clear that your goal is to attempt to preserve the architectural integrity that defines Gulfstream. I would like to direct your attention to the back of the house. The west side of the house, the cove, was overlooked at the last meeting. Here are our concerns. There is minimal green space due to the size of the two pools surrounding hardscape, fire pit area, and extended dock. The architectural design for the back of this property does not in any way blend into the cove, or for that matter, any other part of Gulfstream. We ask that you take the same amount of care looking at the back of the house as you did to the front. If it is built as currently designed, it will be a drastic and unwelcome change to the cove and Gulfstream. Thank you for your time, Ellen Walton. She also came in and looked at the plans, and I made her aware that the newly designed plans that were approved will be here Monday, and that she could come in and look at them again. And I think that will appease her.
Very good. Thank you for reading that. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, let's move on to the Town Manager's Report on bank.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that the Town Manager has been working closely with Commissioner Lyons on this issue. So I would just kind of kick it over to Commissioner Lyons to provide maybe an update on what their findings have been.
Okay, I'm going to give you a brief report. The Town Manager and I recently did a review of our banking practices, including investing excess cash not needed for the day-to-day operations of the town. This became a priority because the town had built up cash and equivalents in excess of $12 million, which is being reserved for the town's capital investment plan, CIP. The process confirmed our key banking investing criteria ranked as follows. First, safety of principal. Second, liquidity. Third, rate of return. A few remarks on safety of principal. All of the town's deposits and short-term investments are in qualified public depositories, which is governed by the State of Florida Public Deposits Program. Banks who are qualified public depositories are required to pledge assets of varying percentages based on quality. The collateral consists of cash and various qualified investment-grade instruments. In the event of a liquidity or a solvency issue of a qualified public depository, this pool collateral backs the public funds. Bottom line, our cash is safe. Let me talk briefly about liquidity. We keep sufficient funds in operating account to cover day-to-day expenses. Excess cash is invested in money market account or certificates of deposit. The majority of the cash can be withdrawn daily, with any investments being a very, very short duration. Interest rate of interest to all of us. But again, it's safety of principal before we turn on principal. After comparing various interest rates at different banking institutions, we have invested over $11 million in a money market account at Flagler Bank, yielding 4.6% on a monthly basis. This will generate income over $40,000. On an annual basis, it's almost $500,000. In summary, our money is safe. We can access it anytime, and it is yielding a very competitive rate. So it might have been a little long, but, you know, it's a key asset in the town, and we don't want to lose it. And we want to get a good return.
That's a great return. Thank you for your efforts, Paul, in assisting the town in trying to secure it better and as well preserving a safe rate of return for the town. Okay, let's move on then to artificial grass. Ms. Mazzaro?
Thank you, Mayor. So this was brought up at the last meeting. The Town Commission had previously discussed this in November of '21 and decided that we were not interested in amending the code. The code currently reads, "The use of synthetic or artificial plant material is prohibited." So it doesn't necessarily, I don't think that artificial grass and the widespread use of it that we're seeing now around the surrounding areas was necessarily a thought, but we did address this in November of '21. This was something that was brought up by a resident to the commissioners and discussed last month. So we said from the staff level that we would provide an update on sort of what we discussed. So we attached the meeting minutes from that meeting, as well as ordinances from Ocean Ridge, which we discussed a little bit, I think, at that meeting, which was very comprehensive. That was something that I know, I think Commissioner DeHassith or someone had mentioned to me on the Ocean Ridge Commission, how much time and thought was put into that ordinance. So we've attached that, as well as an ordinance from the town of Palm Beach that does regulate artificial turf, allow it, and regulate it. So for example, it can't be visible from the public right of way in either municipality, so things like that. With that, just putting it out for discussion. Anthony Beltran is here and has reviewed the Ocean Ridge ordinance to the extent that there are any maybe technical questions that anyone has. But really, this is just put out for discussion, whether or not we want to entertain a code change to allow artificial grass under certain circumstances.
Bring it up for discussion.
No, I think we should consider it again, even though it wasn't that long ago that it was discussed and thought to not move on it. The audience hasn't had a chance to see what we've read from the town of Palm Beach or the town of Ocean Ridge. But I think if we decide to go forward, that a good sample of what we may want to be looking at is that from the town of Ocean Ridge is extremely detailed, but maybe a little too confusing, Scott, because I don't know if you would be able to figure out, reading that comprehensive description of what you can do, what you could do. I would also like to say that if we do it, I'd certainly like to limit it to possibly the sides of residences where there was such dense foliage that you can't grow grass naturally, and possibly in the rear of the home. But again, only if no one else could see it. I know we don't want anything visible from the road, but I don't think you'd even want neighbors to the rear to be seeing it, say, across the canal, across the cove, or something like that.
That's a point that's not raised in the Ocean Ridge ordinance. Backyards from the water, that if they're not visible from the street, or perhaps even from town residents, but they are visible to the public.
I would just like to clarify, not visible from the street, because the side yards, you can still see from the street. And then between the driveway, a lot of people use the artificial grass for their driveways, which is, you know, it's hard to grow grass with the paver situation.
That's currently allowed.
I would leave that. Yeah, the only visible one would be between the papers.
I talked to Trey about this yesterday, and I think my conclusion was the same as the other Tom. You know, if you look at it, the cove is a new issue. If you go down the intercoastal to Lake Boca, which I've done, a lot of people probably have done that, you'll see down there in the other municipalities that you've got a lot of zero-scape, a lot of artificial turf on the waterway. I don't know if that's necessarily what we want here, obviously. I mean, there's a reason down there, and there's a reason for zero-scape and all that stuff you take into account. But I threw a number out. Of course, you know, Anthony and the staff can verify this. But I think in Ocean Ridge, you've got these numbers, 25% of the gross lot area and different metrics. But whether it was limited to the sides, or maybe to 10%, I mean, again, it depends on lot size. You know, I think I'd be in support of that. I think there's already probably some residents putting small amounts of turf and wet and damp areas. I mean, I have an area which is on the south side of my property where the, where our equipment is, which is backing up to the north side of April Best Lodge's house. And it's tough to grow grass there. I don't know if I would necessarily put the turf there, but that would be an area. So I can see it on the sides. And the other issue other than the cove is that, you know, everybody's house is different. Some houses, there's no way you can see the backyard. Other houses, you know, you can't. People are in angles. Lot sizes are different. But I'd be in support of some change, but it would be modest.
Paul, what are your thoughts?
Well, I would say modest, and administratively, it could be a very slippery slope.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We don't have enforcement. Not that I want enforcement, but it's just, there's so many exclusions as opposed to inclusions. I don't know. It's kind of tough. So, you know, you have a nice property. It's on the intercoastal. You can't put it in your backyard. If somebody builds a house, two-story, good probability you can look into the backyard. I don't know. It's complicated. But if we do it, it should be very minimal. And I think we should look at the amount of square footage needs to be, the open space in the property. Because, you know, most of the house is already taken up. On the footprint of the house, taking up the property, we should do it as a percentage of what's open. Those are my thoughts.
That comes back to the two-story home issue that we've been wrestling with as well. I think what I'm hearing is, you're okay with it. It's not visible. If neighbors don't see it, well, if you have a two-story home, how do you not see the neighbor's backyard from the second story? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But to your point, how do you enforce that? I don't know. I would like to move this forward a little bit. I think there's been a lot of requests for artificial turf. Other towns are doing it, and as Tom mentioned, there are areas where you can't grow grass. And so it looks rather blighted. So I think it's something we should consider doing. I can just, I agree with you, though, Paul. How do you administratively define it, limit it? That's what I'm not quite sure about. Paul, maybe, Troy, you can.
I mean, I would like to make it a level-two review, which is consistent with Palm Beach. They have their, one of their boards review it, so we can have certain criteria. And if the criteria are, I don't want to go something somewhat firm, like need or, you know, lack of ability to grow based on the location, something that, you know, a site plan could be provided with, you know, exactly the reason for the artificial turf. Or if we just want to do it administratively and have it be based on a percentage, that's something that staff can look into now that we're entertaining and having this conversation. Maybe provide an update with some options next month.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it needs to be, it would need to be reviewed by the ARB.
By board.
And permitted, you require a permit.
I mean, I think the point is, you know, we're going to move in a little bit into the direction of the modern times. But again, it's like, oh, you want artificial grass while you're in Gulfstream? It's going to be a pretty big deal. You need to go to Town Hall, get an application, make sure your landscaper or landscape company's on board. You've got to go to the, you know, I mean, the downtown of Delray, you have to do that to paint a building. It's going to go to sprats.
A lot of people don't understand much about artificial turf. They get it sold to them as this is an easy way to avoid mowing your lawn. You put it down, you forget about it. Where's Anthony? I thought it might be good for you to discuss a little bit about artificial turf, how it's laid, and how it has to be maintained.
I'm a warning commission. I'm far from an expert on artificial turf, but I have installed some in my career because I own a landscaping company outside of what I do here. So with that being said, the maintenance on artificial turf is almost as equivalent to having someone monthly taking care of your property, because you have to vacuum it, brush it, you got to keep it maintained, you got to scrub and wash it to keep it in its natural state. There's a sealer that you have to put on the actual artificial turf to keep it the same color that it is because of the UV rays. It discolors it very quickly, and it deteriorates it. And if we go with the code that we would probably piggyback off of the one from Ocean Ridge, theirs is a biodegradable type of turf that they're wanting to use on their coat. So that lasts usually about seven years lifespan. So in seven years, be ready to spend the same amount of money that you put into it when you first put it in, if not more. Because if so much is being used now, people are charging more money because it's expensive. So, I mean, they're being sold that it's easier to maintain it, and you just put it in, you can walk away from it. And that's necessarily not true. Seams in, it starts separating. You have to have it stretched every now and then to make sure it's all tamped down and still level and still tight. And anytime you do a repair to it, it's going to be fairly difficult because you can't blend it in because you have new product and no product. So you would have to replace certain sections of it. But like I said, I'm far from an expert on it. I've seen it. I know people that deal with it on a regular basis. And they've telling me that if they could get out of it from doing what they're doing, they wouldn't continue doing it anymore because it's so expensive. And nobody wants to spend the money on the maintenance of it. So, I mean.
So it would have to be part of a change as well, requiring.
Say again, I'm sorry?
We'd have to require a certain amount of maintenance so that its appearance is preserved.
Correct.
We don't want deteriorated artificial grass.
They have that part of their ordinance that if it gets to a certain point of where it's, you know, actually decaying and looking dingy and not staying up to standard on the code that they require for it to be exchanged.
Thank you. By the way, I did, we googled pros and cons. And hygiene is another issue. You really need to keep it clean.
It holds a fungicide inside the carpet itself.
And the other thing that people should be forewarned, if they're going to buy it in Florida, that's when it beats on it, your dog or your chaw, it can't walk on it. It's too hot.
It gets really hot.
So, and I, I think a lot of the providers push all the benefits, but they fail to mention it.
Yeah, I just want to celebrate.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham wanted it noted that if you did go with the Ocean Ridge ordinance, that they have 10 years that it needed to be replaced, and he thought it should be five if we went with it instead of 10.
Five years?
That was his suggestion instead of 10.
I think that relates to a grandfathering provision of, provision of currently installed artificial turf. So he wanted to make sure that we could enforce our code relative to, to the extent that we were allowing existing violations of that code. He didn't want to just let them go for 10 years. He wanted to keep that date at five. But we would not have to necessarily grandfather any in. That was just something that they did in Ocean Ridge.
Right, right. I think we should open it up for public comment.
Good morning. My name is Bill Ryan, and I'm here for this specific reason. A couple of residents has reached out. I'm the general manager of a company called Foreverlon Palm Beach. We're a national dealership based out of Ohio. We have 90 dealerships, and Palm Beach is my territory. So a lot, you spoke, and in the turf industry, I like to say there's two different types of product. One is a very cheap imported product that is brought into the country. And then there's Foreverlon's turf. So we have 100% ownership of our synthetic turf. We designed our turf for 20 years. We manufacture in Dalton, Georgia. We sell it, and we install it. 100% full turnkey dealership. Our turf does nothing that you said. And I'm not, and your statements are pretty correct on everything else on the market. Our turf is antimicrobial. Our seams do not come up. There is no fading in other. Our turf comes with a 15-year warranty on all of our turf that we manufacture. We do work throughout the entire county of Palm Beach County, let alone the whole state. A lot in Royal Palm on their, on their intercoastals that you were talking about, the Breakers. And just, I could talk a lot about Foreverlon, our company, our culture, and what we provide. But I hear you guys talking, and I want to give you some information as far as like whether you want a green space or a percentage is opinion. But you need to be concerned about product production or like specs. So there's testing that's called permeability test. And so this dictates the amount of liquid that will flow through the synthetic. So, so there's, there's testing that's called permeability test. And so this, this dictates the amount of liquid that will flow through the synthetic turf. And it is very important because that's where the challenges come. You'll, you'll get, say, I'm sure you, the synthetic turf you've seen has like a black plastic backing with tiny holes that are every like eight, 10 inches. The water liquid is not going to permeate through that. And that, you, you, you have a challenge with your neighbor. Your neighbor does that. Where's that water going to run off to? So it's very important. Our product is made, developed and made here in the United States, and we have independent testing on every single vertical brand we have. The, the industry standard is what I respectfully call the other kind of turf. You cannot go and say, what is your, your, your PFSA test? Or your lead test or your permeability test because they don't test their turf. It's, it's a commodity that they, they build a, they build a multi-use product that they'll say is a landscape, pet and, and. Playground turf and sell it to the masses. Foreverlon, we build a specific turf for a specific application. So one of our biggest sellers that everybody wants is a canine grass. There is nothing like it on the market. No one can ever touch the specs that it makes. It drains 800 gallons an hour. It is built specifically for dogs and durability and drainage. Again, antimicrobial, our seams do not come off. Our product is warranted for 15 years. I have product data testing that I can provide on all of our products. I just wanted to. Give you some information to, to make decisions on, on its application process. Because that's, to me, that as, as a homeowner as well, I live in Palm Beach, I, I would be really worried if someone was putting. The industry standard next door to me in their entire yard because their water is, I know it's not going to drain. It's going to be like, you know, building their, their, their grave that high and.
Is your company the only one that makes such grass?
Yes, it is. It is the only, it is the only company that, because it's ours. It's our turf. We own it.
No competitive company that provides?
Not like ours. Absolutely not. There's no, there's no company out there that can meet, that we, we meet or exceed every spec out there in the entire market. So. A perfect example, we, we're, we're working with the Hearst family, which they started the Boys and Girls Club. They have a big. Estate and Wellington Polo Club, and we provided them information and they showed it to their commission. And, and this is me not, I'm not even speaking. I just provided the information. And they showed it to them and they said, okay, not only can you do this, but as of today, Foreverlon Palm Beach is the only synthetic turf that is allowed to do synthetic turf in the polo club. And I didn't even speak to them. They just did it from reading our specs. I had a vendor that was in. Lighthouse Point trying to get a synthetic turf, because I work with Rep Services, Playmore, MBR, Burke, all, every, any person who is putting a. Playground or a commercial facility is coming to me for synthetic turf. Because not only does it have its specs and how it's produced, but also the quality and what we provide as a dealership. He, he spent four months trying to get this turf approved by Lighthouse Point, and he called me and was telling me, I said, why are you trying to put this in there? First of all.
We got it.
You got it. All right. I don't want to go on and go on. I want, I want to give you guys some information, please. The most, the moral to anything is permeability. Make sure that the product that you do, if you do approve and you list a synthetic turf. That it will, it will, it will function properly and it doesn't cause problems with others.
How long have you been in business?
20 years the company has been in business. Palm Beach has been there 10 years.
So it's guaranteed for 15?
It's, it's a 15-year warranty. Yes, ma'am. And in a residential applicant, and this, and that's the same warranty, and it's the same built turf that is on. In North Palm Beach Anchorage Park, we just did like two months ago, and they had, they've got 100 kids there every weekend. And so, in a residential, residential application. We can't even tell you how long it's going to last because it's guaranteed for 15 and it lasts 15 years in those commercial settings. Yeah.
Is that correct on the maintenance though?
No. So, the only thing, well, and I speak about Foreverlon Palm Beach is maintenance. There, it's, there's no maintenance. You, yeah, there's leaves, there's things that fall on top of it. You would blow it off. And so some, some residential customers that might have lots of gatherings and functions there where they have a lot of people walking in very specific areas. It might lay the turf down. My crew comes out with a power broom and it's a, it's a, it's a machine that's meant to turn it up. And we add infill and power broom it, and that might be something that you do maybe annually. That's like as used. There is absolutely no standard. Every three months you do this on Foreverlon's product. I, I won't speak about the others, but there isn't.
Anybody else wish to comment on this topic?
Yeah, I don't own a company like that.
I need you to go to the, and I need, I need a card from you, Mr. Foreverlon.
Unfortunately, that's a normal statement, so I'm used to it.
Yeah, I don't own a company like that. I'm not trying to sell you my grass. But we have been considering it, and believe me, I wouldn't do it if I didn't think it was going to make my lawn look better. And so I think when you're looking at your regulations, it should be all about the quality. The quality of the artificial turf has greatly improved. And so I think your ordinance should be about the quality that somebody's putting down. Shouldn't be about the backyard, the front yard, 25%. To me, I think it's going to make my yard look better. I might be wrong. If I did, I'd pull it up, but I think it is. And so I question, well, why wouldn't you want your front yard? And I, I think it's a question of quality, not 25%. I mean, what if I have 27%? Am I going to have a whole yard that I can't put it in? I mean, that's really kind of a silly restriction. Anyway, I just think quality should be the concern.
Can I get your name for the record?
Marty Latour.
Marty Latour?
Thank you, Marty. Anyone else?
Ms. King, please step up.
My name is Cuppy Craft. I hadn't even considered artificial turf, and now I'm just really excited about it. The rainfall, the rains have become so hard and so long. I don't know whether you agree with that or not, but. Our pool floods and the chlorine, the, the grass is close to our pool and so is a potocarpus hedge, which I've had to replace, I don't even want to tell you how many times, particularly in the summer. And this would be such a, a good solution to me. Now, you can't see it from the street, but I, I do think, just hearing that other towns are considering it. That we should be more open to these new products.
Thank you, Cuppy. Okay. Well, I think we need to explore it some more, certainly based on.
Yeah, I think we should. I, I would recommend we, we can keep it active and move forward with a, a plan in maybe a month and a half. I'm going to discuss it again.
And samples of quality versus unquality.
Yeah.
A lot like.
You know, to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I think the standard is going to be critical.
Yeah, I agree.
If that water stopped flowing through that artificial grass, that's a whole different issue. So, okay. Right, yeah. Yeah, so let's see some samples. Let's review the, the ordinance. Try to get a better idea of what we might allow. Let's take, let's put it off to the next meeting then with some more information.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay. Let's move on then to an update on massing in the core district. Mr. Nazaro?
Thank you, Mayor. So we had what we believed could be a silver bullet from the town of Palm Beach, which was cubic content ratio. They do apply that only in the RB district, which I think is a medium density comparable to what we would look at. In, in the core. So I did reach out to Skip Randolph, and I, I asked about how they apply that and how they like it. One of the architects that we spoke to that does some work in Palm Beach that also does some work. And Gulfstream mentioned that it is very complicated and that he has a specific person dedicated in his office to handling this cubic content formula. So, the code reads, cubic content ratio means a measure of land use intensity expressing the mathematical relationship. Between the cubic content of a building and the unit of land is arrived at by dividing the gross cubic content as calculated by multiplying building height. As stated in the definition of the term building height of in this section, times exterior building width, times exterior building depth of all structures. By the gross lot, gross area of the lot. So that would limit. Massing as we understood it, because the taller the building goes, the smaller it has to be because it's about really volume, not just. Your lot coverage essentially expressed through floor area ratio. So. Mr. Randolph, in his infinite wisdom, shot off an email and said, the zoning staff hates this provision and contends. It makes no sense and is difficult to administer. They like floor area ratio. They're looking to eliminate this provision from the code. So unfortunately, that is not somewhere that, given that statement along with what the architect had said about. A specific person in his office dedicated to doing that. I, I don't know if we would have to work with an outside mathematician to figure this and check this out. But that seems to not be the, the way that we are, are going to go as far as a potential resolution. So Greg had mentioned that. We could look at lowering maximum height for two-story buildings. We could look at increased front setback, whether it's for just the two-story portion. Comparable what we saw at 3,400. And I know the public comment said how much time we spent on the, on the front of the. Of the home, which is important because that's, everyone's going to see that every day, walking up and down Polo or Gulfstream Road. So those are some avenues that we want to continue to, to look at. Also, we do have some, the FEMA maps that are changing. That was also an issue. So. I want to be able to spend some time as well to look at, okay, we have lower, the lower end of, of the community is at Old School Road. We get a little bit higher as we look at Gulfview. What sort of impact are we going to have as far as maybe some existing homes and their base flood elevation or the required finished floor elevation? Compared to where FEMA is going to put them in the future? Because if that is, for some of the older homes, three or four feet. That is significant and gives us an idea of the problem that we're looking at, not just from a zoning perspective, but from. The fact that you're going to have to build, put in a bunch of fill, and even if it's a single-story home, if you maximize that, it is going to look a lot taller than a single-story home next door. So, we're, we're kind of largely. Providing an update this month with those things in mind. I mentioned that we were going to have an ARPB. Workshop on a number of items. We didn't have enough people that were available that month, so we're actually doing it next week. So we're going to continue to review the code, neighborhood districts, some parts of the code that would assist in. Maybe trying to address the, the massing issue. It's, it's been. The, it's been an issue in town for decades. I mean, it's a constant problem. Or a constant issue that the, the commission has grappled with. That's why we, I believe that's why we have the design manual. We have our floor area ratio where it is. We have maximum building heights and eve heights. But is there anything else that we can do, given it seems to maybe not be enough in, in some people's eyes? So with that, that, that's just my update on amassing in the core district and, you know, certainly open up for discussion if anyone feels like there's something we're missing. But it will be discussed at next month's meeting as well, once we have our review of the code done for presentation to the ARPB.
We'll have our workshop next week, and we'll be discussing this at length with the ARPB members. Let's, let's get some feedback from them, perhaps because we're going to really focus on it. Get some suggestions, recommendations, and we'll bring those back next month to the commission to discuss. Does that sound reasonable?
It is the 16th, which is, I believe is Thursday at 8:30. So if you wanted to attend, certainly it is a, a public meeting that is, that has been noticed. So if we have multiple.
Can a second commissioner be there?
Yes, because it's noticed as a public meeting and there is, you know, it's open to the public. There is no sunshine issue. So everyone could, from the commission could realistically come and have. That review and also review of, you know, ex parte, you know, everything that we're doing for our new board members as well.
Are the consultants going to be there and architects?
It is only. It is only going to be. Originally, it was just. For some of our newer board members, because we have a few new alternates, explaining to them very basic things, like the mayor has said a few times, sunshine law, ex parte communications disclosures. And then also what the staff does. I mean, we look at everything, setbacks, percentages, FAR, all the way to, to design criteria. So it's going to be a very thorough review of what staff does and what their role is in the ARPB in reviewing those applications.
So like Marty Minor would not be?
He, that's correct. Right.
Yet.
At, at this point. Now, now I'll say, Paul Lyons had mentioned, Commissioner Lyons had said. Maybe we should bring in a consultant for this. And I said, at this point, we don't have an approval from the commission to bring in someone to try to look at this. At, at this point, the, the, the problem is massing. It's just kind of this gray area that we know exists, but. How can we communicate that to a contractor and say, we want to address massing? You know, without maybe thorough, having a more thorough understanding of it ourselves. But that, that's certainly. If, if that's the way the commission wants to go and bring in a, a third party. You know, consultant to, to try to help us with this. That's how we, you know, had the design manual.
By, by the way, I'm generally. Don't go first to consultants, but in this case, this is a common problem throughout the country. There's a lot of municipalities are facing. I think of the village of Southampton has the same kind of issues where, you know, they have the first floor elevation going up. Even higher because of. And I don't know what they do, but I'm sure there's a lot of people who have been addressing this, and I just want to be sure that we look at all the remedies and. I think having a broader perspective from experience of other municipalities making up, that's my reason for.
I think there are two things to consider. Bringing the lots up to what they have to be, and also the architecture of the house is a huge thing. I mean, you can build a 3,000 really blocky house. Or you can build a 3,000 kind of softer, low-key house. So I mean, I think they're absolutely two different things here.
Are they in a play?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right, then let's, let's bring something back at next month's meeting. And we can take it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Before we move on, I just want to mention that in late March, the Place O'Sole entryway will be closed for construction. For construction work, the entrance will be temporarily relocated north on Federal. The town met with the project managers of Blue Water Cove. Who are redesigning the entryway to provide an additional entrance lane on the south side. So the town met with the project managers and Rob Canfield, who's on the Place O'Sole Property Owners Association and a member of our ARPB. And he's serving as a point person between the development and Place O'Sole, and is going to communicate up-to-date information with the residents over there. But just by way of an update, that is going to occur in late March, so I wanted to just let everyone know that that is proceeding. You know, probably before our next meeting, and that we are in communication with our residents over there through Mr. Canfield.
Very good. ARPB will be meeting on March 23rd at 8:30 AM. Anyone who wishes to attend. Finance report, Mr. Nazaro?
Thank you, Mayor. So this report represents about a third of the fiscal year 2223 budget. 96% of the ad form distributions revenue for fiscal year 2223 have been collected. Highland Beach received approximately $55,000 in permanent revenue for the month of February. FPL provided us with notification that our electric rates will go up by just under 5% effective April 2023. And revenues and expenses for this fiscal year are trending as expected.
Any comments? If not, acting, actually pass, let's move to police report.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked if the February monthly activity report be accepted as submitted. We've also completed the background investigation on one applicant for police officer. He has accepted employment. Will be starting March 22nd.
Very good. So the comment was raised about burglary auto. That doesn't mean auto theft, does it?
No, it's, there are burglaries to autos. We have had no auto thefts. And even the ones that are listed were open doors. We've had no vehicles entered by.
No smashing.
And some of them, there was nothing even taken. They just went into the car. We must log as a burglary.
All right, moving on to items for commission action. We have a number of items to discuss. Any ex parte communications?
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out the Gulfstream School cap was continued from last meeting, and I still have a voting conflict. Yes, we participate, we refused.
Anyone else? If not, let's move on then to the Gulfstream School. If not, let's move on then to the Gulfstream School enrollment cap. Mr. Nazar, would you lead this discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, for the third or fourth time. Thanks again. So this meeting, or this this item, rather, has been discussed a number of times. Renee Clark did send out a postcard to all of our residents, which was discussed at the last meeting, indicating how people can participate in Gulfstream Matters by coming to commission and ARPB meetings and noted that Gulfstream School enrollment cap, artificial turf, amassing in the core district would all be discussed. So we have covered a number of those topics. Just by way of background, which we haven't really gotten into before. So I just wanted to note that we do have the original developers agreement, which was entered into between the school and the town in nineteen ninety-four. Covers a number of land use topics, including the enrollment cap of two hundred and fifty students. So that's been in existence for quite some time, nineteen ninety-four. It was affirmed subsequently in the amendment to the developers agreement, which was the first amendment in two thousand and one. And again, in the second amendment to the developers agreement in twenty thirteen. So just by way of recap, the school is seeking an amendment to increase student enrollment from two hundred and fifty to three hundred students. Earlier this year, the town did provide conditional approval to an amendment that would allow the addition of a building outside of the permitted building envelope, as is defined in the developers agreement, in order to provide food service to its students. So again, just recapping the contents of some of those, some of those agreements. The initial developers agreement from nineteen ninety-four imposes certain restrictions on the use of the property and includes a penalty of five hundred dollars per day for certain violations of those restrictions. That would include the two hundred and fifty student enrollment cap building outside of the building envelope. Also outlines building envelope one A and allows up to six thousand square feet being built there. The requirement or the the landscape specification that were part of that and the use of the houses that were part of the premises, including the one-story wood residence adjacent to Oleander Way, which is to be only used as faculty residence or as an office and requiring the other two one-story structures to be maintained in a residential appearance and only used for residences for faculty, employees, and their guests. So that development agreement dealt with two variances that allowed a new building to be built that did not replace an existing structure and a variance with respect to the front yard setback. So all of that was contained in that nineteen ninety-four agreement. Moving forward to two thousand and one, the Werra's clauses indicate that the parties wish to amend the agreement to provide for the abolishment of the requirement that certain covered walkways be removed when certain construction is performed. That probably relates to our floor area ratio and the square footage. So that was part of the ninety-four developers agreement, and we removed that so the kids could, I guess, not get rain on their heads when they expanded actual enclosed spaces. It affirmed the two hundred and fifty student enrollment cap and added a ten thousand dollar annual payment to the town. This included an annual adjustment tied to the Consumer Price Index. Last year, last year's figure was included in the materials. This year, the school paid fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-two cents, which was that that reflected in the developers agreement, the formula, ten thousand times the CPI and everything. That was the language in there indicates that that's a voluntary payment. To the extent that we revisit that, we'd like to remove the the fact that it's voluntary. It would be part of the development agreement. And it was in recognition of the extraordinary services to provided by the town. The staff believes that that is, that relates to the police presence that we have outside in the morning and the afternoon dealing with traffic management. Excuse me. In talking with interim Chief Hasley, he indicated that it's approximately seven point five hours per week. It took the cost of our mean, the middle officer going from entry level to to this and essentially everyone but the chief. And that mean officer was about fifty-eight dollars per hour, the total cost to put him in the chair, all of his benefits and salary. You take that, multiply that by the thirty-five weeks that schools in session. Now, I don't know if we provide any additional traffic management during summer time or whatever, but the school year is about thirty-five weeks. And that figure comes out to fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that is in the same ballpark as what they paid this year. It's within about a thousand dollars. The staff report for the development application, I'm just going to read it again. This is from two thousand and one, just providing a little background. It says, over the last two decades, the school's facilities and curriculum have evolved to keep pace with educational standards and parental expectations, while the absolute enrollment has remained capped at two hundred and fifty students. Both the school and the town have put forth great effort to ensure that the school can maintain high educational standards and respond to student needs without inappropriately impacting the surrounding single-family homes. Particularly with the site improvements conducted in nineteen ninety-seven, the school has endeavored to be a better neighbor. Those site improvements were drainage landscaping, sewer connection, new parking layout, and a relocated basketball area. Additionally, the the headmistress at that at that time and school president have made themselves available to town officials and have immediately addressed any requests from the town. For example, last year, and this was in two thousand and one, the school participated in a fifty percent cost share drainage improvement project when requested by the town. The school has made a commitment that additions will not increase enrollment or traffic impacts. However, the mutual efforts to be compatible neighbors must continue. The conditions recommended above should assist in this regard. So those conditions were, again, that's from the staff reports that was generated by, I imagine, Chris Garrison, who was the town manager at that time. And then we have, moving on, a little over a decade later in two thousand and thirteen, we have the second amendment to the developers agreement, which noted that the envelope one A, which originally was approved for up to six thousand square feet, allowed an addition of, was, it exceeded that by about seventeen hundred square feet, allowing a total addition of seventy-seven hundred sixty-five square feet, included a new pavilion and classroom building of approximately four hundred square feet and added a requirement that the school shall provide to the town a yearly certification that enrollment at the school does not exceed the maximum student enrollment of two hundred and fifty students as established in section one B of the developers agreement dated June tenth nineteen ninety-four. Now, that, again, that development agreement went into into effect in two thousand and thirteen. I don't think that the town had requested or received that enrollment certification. Some of you may remember what was happening in two thousand and thirteen and how a lot of the bandwidth from the town was was dealing with public records requests. So I think that, I don't know if that was something that we lost sight of, or it went into effect. But essentially, immediately after that, we had essentially a hundred percent of the town's attention in a different area for at least those first few years. The only reason we would need to amend the developers agreement is to do things that are inconsistent with its approval, like the fact that they wanted to build seventy-seven hundred square feet when they were capped at six thousand in this envelope one A. So we have worked with with the school and approving other permitting applications that were consistent with that. But we do have the two that are going to come before the town for the the building outside of the building envelope for the the food service, and then, of course, the the attendance. What we see, or enrollment, rather, what we see going forward from the town, regardless of what happens, is on, you know, October first of every year, consistent with the developers agreement, we ask for an enrollment certification, whatever that number is, and invoice them for whatever the the fee is for that year, based on the the services provided by the town, consistent with that amendment to the developers agreement. Again, this is largely this is not a final decision. Staff needs direction into how to modify the developers agreement. In years past, that had kind of gone through, and then it's months and months and months later before something gets through or is approved and filed. But because we didn't know the appetite for the commission, whether to start work on those amendments, that's why we are, we're kind of here. And then we're going to send the development agreement through the level three process, which is, which would include the building to make sure that meets all of our design requirements. And then any modifications to the development agreement that the commission would recommend here generally to be reviewed by the ARPB and then recommend approval denial based on their review to the town commission.
Have we heard anything from the public or since our last meeting that was in opposition to the increase in student enrollment?
So we do have, I think Renee placed on the dais and a few emails that were, I believe, all in support. And then, you know, certainly, we have a number of people here. I don't know if the mayor wants to open a public comment or if we want to have discussion on the commission level first.
I think we discuss first.
There's no negative comments. There's nothing. They're all positive.
Correct.
I don't, I'm in favor of the increase. My only question is, as you know, the administrative part as relates to the annual fee. Should we stay with that CPI adjustment? I think administratively, that's the easiest.
If if we don't touch it, it is again, it is in the ballpark with with the cost, given our estimation.
No, I think what we do is take the the new base.
Oh, I see what you're saying. And then use the same.
But I will say that both parties need to be a little more careful on that. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, I think we set the new base on on your analysis with Chief Hasley as to what the the cost is to the town for reimbursement, we do CPI annually after that. But the town will be the one preparing the invoice and requiring certification of the enrollment so that we don't get in this situation again. Good. Comments from the public? Yes, George. Please.
Two questions. I think you just answered one about the circulation. My other one, I think you all can answer. The.
Hey, identify yourself.
Sorry, George Smith. In the model that you sent and you laid out these sections for the what you'd like for enrollment, it came up to three twenty.
Correct.
So that's what I'm kind of confused, maximum maybe three hundred. So I'm just scared we're going to creep up the next thing you know.
Dr. Smith, could you step up? I couldn't hear the question. Maybe you could state the question for the record and your response.
Yes, Gray Smith, I'm the head of Gulfstream School. The question was about the in the documents that I submitted, it showed a total enrollment that went to three twenty. Right? And as I explained when we when we first had our initial conversation, that that is the max number that we could technically have in capacity on the campus. We have no intention of going to three twenty. The reason is because we we don't, we think we can achieve our mission at three hundred, and that's the number that we want. Right? Going beyond that would jeopardize the mission.
Is there a the chance that you could issue more than three hundred acceptances?
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor, and the the answer is no. We are issuing only up to that number. In, not everyone will accept. You never get one hundred percent. But in this environment, we're confident that we will have very, very high acceptance rate. So we did not, typically, you would make more offers than you, we did not do that. We did not do that.
Okay, good. Yes.
I'm Kupi Craft, and I'm a real estate agent. I work for Douglas Element. And I think it's vital. I mean, the school is the jewel in the crown. And nobody's going to the office anymore. Nobody's working five-day weeks. They're all working from home. And these big new houses that have been permitted in Gulfstream, they all house children. There there could be a ramification down the road that we won't be able to sell those houses if we can't keep attracting young families with with children. I hope you get three twenty. Well, you know, I I think the school has to make the decision of what they can handle and then and then come back to the commission because they have the teachers and the blah blah. I understand all of that. But I am very much in support of raising the cap to three hundred.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Barbara.
I'm Barbara Sloan, and I live at thirty-eight sixty Bermuda Lane. I wanted you to come and live here because the traffic is terrible.
It's terrible everywhere.
Yes, Mike.
I think that the Gulfstream.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Excuse me?
Just identify yourself for the record.
Michael Tierney. I lived in Delray. My mother bought a house in Gulfstream, I think in seventy-four, which my son is living at. I'm a proud grandfather of a child there. Personally, I don't think there's anything more important than education, education. The more kids we can educate, I agree with Kupi. People, you know, the reason my son is living in Gulfstream is because of the school. It is just kind of the heart of this community. And I see other families, young families, moving down here. Actually, I I was selling my house in Delray. We had a very good offer and they walked away because there there was not enough schools. So I think that the school is amazing. I think economically, more students does, you know, help the the economics of getting the best teachers, the best sports program ever. So like Kupi, I'm very supportive of the increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we've kind of gone over this issue repeatedly. So I think we should, we should vote on increasing, allowing the increased enrollment to three hundred, not just a year, but permanently as part of the development agreement with direction to staff to amend it according to what we've discussed here and what you identified as a few issues that need to be put into that agreement.
Who's going to monitor this? I mean, it's going to be certified from the school, so it's not going to be three oh five, three. That that's my concern is, I mean, no offense, but when you come in and say, oh, gosh, we have three hundred and five students, we're not going to say five go home.
So I've had discussions with Renee, and she guaranteed that she would be here as long as Rita was. So so we're going to make that the clerk's responsibility, and she's she's calendared it October first of every year. That is something that is going to be one of her responsibilities.
Okay, I just, you know, because I heard rumors of more students there before you ever came in. And I kept saying, I don't want to hear that.
That's actually a good point. Because we don't want this to happen again. It seems to me that we may want to put some some language in there that should it occur. There is a remedy for it. So but we do have a remedy now. We chose not to pose it. It's a five hundred dollar daily fee. I'm not recommending asking you to pay it, but, you know, I I think it's a practical matter. We're probably not going to take the money. So I just think we should have administratively some step that, you know, we know that that fee being paid is correct and incorrect, and the town can handle that, the way I look at it.
And Renee's in charge.
Renee's in charge.
I've calendared it.
I can assure you that Renee's very good. Last day of the year, she calls me up and says, have you taken your ethics course? Because if you don't take it today, you cannot be a commissioner. So she's very good a follower. All right, someone.
So, Mayor, wait, oh, well, in a moment, are we just making a motion on the enrollment issue or enrollment and development?
So at this point, this is largely advising staff. So technically, a vote is not needed because we have to amend the development agreement, developers agreement. And that's really where that final vote comes in.
That's a good point. So.
So really, staff is looking for direction. There seems like there's a lot of support. We're going to go ahead and we're going to open up the developers agreement. We're going to make some modifications. We're. So really, staff is looking for direction. There seems like there's a lot of support. We're going to go ahead and we're going to open up the developers agreement. We're going to make some modifications. We're going to work with the school, make sure that those are acceptable, and then we're going to process that with their building application for the refrigerator freezer unit that we discussed a few months ago.
And we've already approved the 300 for this school.
Correct, yes.
All right. Well, that's the direction that is for staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on to the security camera agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. So we worked with Flock for the license plate reading cameras. As discussed last month, we do have a contract for your review and approval. I did make some slight modifications. Again, we are looking at placing these license plate reading cameras at Avenue Osola, which will cover the entirety of Place Osola and then all the public roads in town, starting with County Road of the South going in the, I'm sorry, starting at County Road of the North, going to Gulfy Drive of the South, County Road, Sea Road, Lakeview and Gulfview will all have cameras at essentially on the A1A intersection. Bannon will have one at Oleander because of the canopy and these needing to be solar. Greg had a rough estimate of approximately $30,000 to hook these up to electricity. I know that's something that Mr. Lyons mentioned. So that is that is a large figure that we can maybe revisit in the future. If placing them in an area that does not have sunlight access would be beneficial. It is a one-year agreement. We kind of discussed that this would be a, not necessarily a pilot program, but just an initial step. So originally, it was a two-year agreement. So we modified that to a one-year agreement. And then just some minor modifications under the agreement that was provided to you in 2.8.1 designated locations. Previously read that Flock had final discretion on location. Now it reads Flock shall have discretion on location of Flock hardware subject to final approval by agency. So that gives us the ability to provide with final sign off. Then later on, right after reinstalls in that same paragraph, after installation, any subsequent changes to the deployment plan will incur a charge for Flock's then current list price for reinstalls. That now reads after installation, any subsequent changes to the development deployment plan after 30 days. So it gives us 30-day window to position these and make sure that they're getting sunlight based on our preferred location. And then just some other minor modifications aren't necessarily worth noting. Boilerplate regarding public entity crimes, Inspector General E-Verify, scrutinized companies and public records. And that's presented for your review and approval. And I would just ask that you authorize Acting Chief Hasley to execute that contract on behalf of the town.
One question. Someone had mentioned that it would be nice if the poles matched our existing green poles in town.
Right, so we we do have a representative that I discussed that with. And she essentially said, probably not, but I'll let let her.
Hi, I'm Lynda Gervis with Flock Safety. So yes, I actually spoke with one of my team that they did tell me that the pole, we do never reuse the poles ever. So even if we were to take it out and it was still perfectly usable, we will not reuse those. So they said, it's kind of like, don't ask, don't tell. You guys can paint the poles if you want to. Just obviously stay away from the camera. You don't want it to, you know, if obstruct, like if you're spray painting, I don't know how you do it. You don't want to, you know, get any paint on the actual camera. So it does not obstruct the way it's capturing images.
So you can't provide a a powder coated green pole?
Correct.
Wouldn't it make more sense to spray paint them if that's what we want to do before they put up? Or that's not possible?
I don't think that's going to be possible. I would recommend, I mean, I guess I wouldn't recommend spray paint. I'm not an expert on painting poles. But yeah, I guess with a paintbrush would probably be a better idea.
So they're black?
They are black, yes.
Well, you don't want it's two years later being peeling off. I don't.
No, I agree. The black will kind of fade into the.
I'm okay with the black.
It's a pilot program of, you know.
I agree. If the paint comes off, it's much better black.
Hardware is not the cost, it's the service contract.
So at this point, it looks like they cannot provide green poles. So let's see what they look like and how they work. And if there's an appetite to maybe paint them, we can revisit that in the future.
And and we have early 30 days when they when they place them, Anthony or somebody's going to specifically decide where exactly where they go.
That's right. So we we did work with Lynda in telling her sort of where we want them to go. And then she said, well, you know, they need to be on the north side because that's where the solar panel will capture the the sun coming from the south. We just want to make sure that where we believe they are best positioned, work to get a good read. And one, if they do over that first 30-day period, we're great. If there maybe is some issue on the the location that we decide, we will, you know, we will ask them to relocate them in accordance with the contract. When in that first 30 days, there would be no no fee for that.
Okay, the other question is on Place Osola. Are they getting ready to renovate that entrance way and also the booth that's standing at the booth, you know, the guard gate? So would we delay on that installation?
That is probably what we'll do. I mean, we're not going to put it up while it's not going to provide any any benefit.
Really near the near the guard gate.
I believe it's going to be on the guard gate.
It's going to be powered.
And and hardwired in.
Yeah, okay.
They've got power there.
Correct.
I have one last question. So we're excited about doing this. Once you get excited, when are you going to get it done?
So after all, the paperwork is completed. Usually our biggest holdup is permitting. So this will depend on your town and how what your permitting process looks like. But if we don't need permits or if so whether we don't need permits or after the permits are approved, it's usually about six weeks to get the cameras in. We will have someone come out onsite to do a onsite survey to make sure that, you know, it's going to work. We're not going to install them if it's not going to work. That's obviously the first priority.